Really?
Close, yes. Right, nobody has to be there to open.
Everybody got one minute.
Cause I did like the lunch program. So I had to be there, I had to be there in the morning to catch the lunches. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
You know what I mean?
Girl, I'm so good to bother ladies.
I do, yeah. That was my summer job. Catching those lunches in the morning.
How about it?
Making sure I was there for that truck.
Michelle is probably not gonna be here tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. She's a guy who's a mess of age. And she said you didn't respond.
Oh, somebody else.
So my only problem is the trucks that I was using. We gotta pass the shit out of the truck.
Okay. Okay, cool.
Because we gotta pass the shit. Because we gotta pass the shit out of the truck.
Kelly, can I? We got a meeting to start.
I'm gonna understand this.
Okay, cool.
Now, my, the internet works on my laptop. Now, I, I. That's odd. That's how I always think. I got to sit and do it.
Is this our last? Okay. I thought I gave you something. Hold on, I have a.
I'm trying to get you any clothes.
I think I reviewed it last week. I reviewed it today.
I got rid of it about one o'clock when we were done.
Should we put it together? Use the old language from the old.
Well, I'll tell you what.
It's weird to not. We've got people in the last.
It's a classic area of.
And so I called it today and it's written.
I don't even remember seeing anything now.
The resolution itself.
Yeah, no.
Always takes care of it.
Yeah, I'll do it. Why not? Three seconds.
I got a line. I'm a gym mom. We really don't like. I'm a gym mom.
Counselor Smith, how you doing, sir? I'm blessed by the best.
No, we just.
Hey, what's going on?
Here we go with this.
I hope I'm not coming down with everything. We have a lot of people.
Put all my glasses.
So, yeah, I told, I told.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, at least you know.
I was down at Schnitzel.
They've done a lot of runs. They've done a lot of big places.
That stuff's still really done.
Six thirty-three? Hi, everybody. Hey, good evening. Uh, it's good to see my colleagues again, and I wanna say, uh, it's good to see everybody. Uh, I'm gonna need, uh, someone to excuse, uh, Councilwoman Tunzington tonight, but let's get started. First of all, let me welcome you to the, uh, caucus meeting of council for Monday, uh, March the tenth. I wanna thank the residents that are currently present with us tonight, and as we begin, uh, I'll ask the, uh, Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Ms. Collier.
Here.
Ms. Mack.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Tunzing. Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Ms. Narom.
Here.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kelly.
Make a motion and we excuse, uh, Councilwoman Tunzing from tonight's caucus minute, caucus meeting, and, uh, regular council meeting.
It's been so moved by, uh, uh, Councilman Kelly. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been so moved and second by Councilwoman Narom. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no. That is approved. All right, tonight, can I get a, um, person to dispose of our last minutes, our reading of our last minutes?
Mr. President?
Councilman Kelly.
I mean, hey, why not? Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, disposal of our council caucus minutes.
Thank you, sir. It's been, uh, most men placed on the floor for the disposal of our last, uh, caucus and, uh, council minutes. Can I please get a second?
Second.
It's been so moved and second by Councilwoman Narom. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Say no. All right, at this time, are, is there any, uh, written communications to council? Yes. Any written communications?
I don't have any. Citizens complaint.
A citizens complaint?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, it wasn't an email?
Yes.
What? That's personal. That's not about business.
Okay, no, no business.
All right. Councilman Kelly, did you address that, uh, letter already with your constituent?
We had a conversation, um, and, uh, and, but, you know, the matter still hadn't been addressed.
Yeah. Okay, so we will, we will move that on. Was. Okay, I'll address that later. We, we, we will handle that. All right, we'll move on from, uh, written communications to committee reports. Are there any committee reports at this time? If there's no committee reports, we'll go to the reports of the directors at this time. Hey, Mr. Sickles, how you doing?
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, for, like, just to catch everyone up on the various, uh, construction projects, not much is going on, as we all know, but do expect things to start up here hot and heavy. Uh, we have a little bit going on around the city, uh, but there'll be much more, uh, coming. I handed out to council two, two items. One's a colored item, and the one is just a black and white larger sheet. Both of these items came from, uh, Cleveland Water Department. I just wanted all of council to be aware of them and what they mean. So the, the colored sheet, uh, talks about that Cleveland Water has eleven thousand plus, uh, accounts here in the city, and it also talks about that of those, uh, connections, there are roughly four thousand that are lead connections. That's the, uh, connection that goes from the main to a house. The plan is, from Cleveland Water, is they will be in the city through the year twenty thirty-seven, and during that time, uh, they'll be replacing a little over three hundred lead service lines every year. This sheet simply has a dot where Cleveland Water thinks there is a lead service line. And the reason I'm sharing all this information is it threw, it, this throws a new kink into all of our thinking for, uh, projects. Our, if we do a road program and we, and pave a road, they will not replace the lead on it for at least five years or, or more, depending on the, uh, on their, what they want to do internally, the, at Cleveland Water. They told us it would be at least five years until they could replace lead on the street. Does that mean we can't do a road program? No, it just means it throws an extra kink in it where we have to now decide, you know, or how, what order do we do all these streets in? Cleveland Water is working closely with us to kinda come up with this twelve or so year plan. The other kink to this is if the lead services are removed from a street, they will not give us money to repair the water line in the street. And so, at least until this program is over. So it'd be another twelve years again. Well, that has been a way that we have been, in the past, been able to, uh, re, do road repairs is by replacing the water lines and then paving the street on top of that. So all this is just throwing a kink in a lot of the way we've been doing things. We're working very closely with Cleveland Water. More information to come, but as of today, this is all I have from Cleveland Water. Yes.
So I'm, the street, the street I live on, it wasn't paved more than five years ago. I'm gonna say like four years ago, and they on my street now. Will they replace the street when they done? Because they tore the street up again.
Cleveland Water is not replacing streets. They are doing little patches and whatever it is that they do. What you see, it's all, that's all strictly Cleveland Water.
So they ain't gonna leave the street in that condition, like with those bumps and, and stuff all in there?
If that's what they're leaving, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have a perfect answer for you. The service department has been helping out quite a bit, uh, with contacting Cleveland Water if issues come up. So you could send an email to, you know, myself and Mark Zicon and, and ask.
Okay.
Cause I have a question.
Sure.
Because they've been in Ward One, like, all the end of, in the fall of last year, cutting those little holes and replacing those lines. So that means that where every street that they have done some of this too, we can't look to get it repaved until twenty thirty-seven?
No, I'm just saying, it's, it's now part of the process. In other words, we have to get, we have to get the lead out of the street before we pave it.
So.
Or we have to wait to pave it at least five years.
Yeah, so for example, in, on Cranwood Park Boulevard, um, they did come through and they replaced the bottom half from Lawrence Down.
Yes, yes.
So that's been replaced.
Yes.
So that means that portion of Cranwood Park Boulevard is open to potentially be repaved.
If they've already, I think I see what you, what you're saying.
You understand what I'm saying to you right now?
The, if the water line was already replaced
Correct.
in the road.
Correct.
Then they will be coming back to pave if the water main has been replaced.
Okay.
Not the ser, lead services.
No, I'm talking about the lead services.
Okay, if the.
I'm talking to the lead services.
If the lead services have been removed, then it has the potential to be paved, but again, that's.
Up in the air.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanna, cause I know they've been, they have been out, uh, they started in the fall, um, going street by street and cutting those little, and cutting holes in the street, replacing those lines and putting them in, and if you drive down some streets over there, you can see where they have cop, they have actually spray painted in front of homes, whether it's copper or lead, um, or to be replaced or, or galvanized. Cause with the steel, are they also doing the galvanized also, or is it just lead?
It's anything that's not copper.
Copper. So, yeah, so they, they have a spray galvanized also. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Smith.
Thank you. It helped me to understand, a- and it sounds as though the scenario you just presented said that if indeed street has lead in it, we will not pave that street until the lead is removed.
That would be the, the best scenario? However, that doesn't mean that it can't be done. It just, the lead won't get removed then until toward the end of their program.
Which is twenty thirty-seven.
Right.
Twenty thirty-seven.
So.
Well, like I said, toward the end.
Lord recognizes, uh.
Yes, sir.
Sir. Chief of Staff, Mr. Rome.
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, if I may jump in, and the only reason I'm jumping in is that Jim explained this to our staff the beginning of last week, and trust me, we had the same kinda questions. The, the main, so there's, I think, to kinda simplify this a little bit, there's kinda two takeaways here. Number one, we're getting all of the lead service replaced in the city. That's great. Good news. No cost to us. Positive. The negative of this is with O H M, we've paved a lot of roads. And the way that we pave roads without a budget to pave roads is through grant funding. And the way this works is there's grant funding that replaces the water main or the water line. I don't wanna misspeak Jim, I apologize. And then there's also funding for the road. What we have done is apply for both of those two things at the same time, and when those two things meet in perfect harmony, roads get paved for free. The way that Jim has spent, and I'm gonna use round numbers, ten million dollars to do a hundred and twenty million in road projects, or in projects, roughly. Complete round numbers, but basically a ten percent cost share for the city throughout our time with O H M. What this means is things get a little bit trickier because those two things don't involve lead service. Now, when we plan these projects out, we have to take into consideration lead service. So what Jim is saying is things are just gonna get a little bit harder for him. Thank you, Jim. Uh, but what we can do with, we can move when the lead service is gonna be replaced. We can move it around strategically during those thirteen years so that we can continue to do what we've been doing, but it just gets a little trickier because now there's one more piece to the puzzle that we have to sync up before we can get it done right. Because if we go and continue down the road projects we've been doing in lieu of the project, we could be basically paving roads that are gonna eventually, in five years from now, get holes punched in them. So what we have to do with this new, which has kinda been dropped in our lap in the last couple of weeks, what we have to do now is kinda strategically look at this and go, okay, if we wanna accomplish this, this is how we develop our timeline going forward. So the, what really changes for us is timing and planning. Um, I'll, ultimately, we're gonna try and accomplish the same thing, but what was a two-part, two-part puzzle before has now become a three-part puzzle. And it's just, uh, I, Jim had brought this up during our monthly meeting with O H M. I thought it was beneficial to let council know.
Appreciate it.
Um, hopefully, you'll see no difference from what we're usually doing. But as council does field the questions with respect to road conditions in their ward, especially in as well as with respect to lead services, I wanted to make sure you guys understood, this is kind of a, it's a new way of looking at things that we're gonna try and, you know, kinda iron out as we go. So I wanted Jim to give you the heads up ahead of time as opposed to, you know, you finding out later. So I hope that gives a little bit of a clarification as to kinda what we're looking at. We can kinda delve into it more, but, and if anything I said there, Jim, is inaccurate, by all means, correct me, but I think that kinda explains a little bit of what we're looking at.
Yeah, you said, you said it perfect. Um, the other piece of the pie is Cleveland Water doesn't just have, they're also getting grant money to remove the sled. And so their grant money only hits certain times of the year. So an example would be this year, if we said, hey, we want you to get the lead out cause we really wanna pave that street. They've already said they're not gonna get any new money until after October of this year. And so, and now that's getting into a season that's too late to start a paving program. By the time you get it out to bid and find a contractor, you're just paying the highest, you know, rates for that, for that thing. So, so that's, that's another piece of this, is that it's just not as straightforward as it used to be where we could all just say, we wanna do this, and we can just do it. Well, if it involves a street with water in it, as simple as that is.
All right.
And that's all I have. Sorry for the long-winded explanation, but.
That is great. Thank you, uh, Mr. Sickles. Uh, we appreciate it. At this time, we're gonna recognize the, uh, the Law Director, Mr. Milco.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I don't have a report. I just wanna bring one thing to the attention of the council regarding the agenda. Um, I passed out, uh, the amended agenda we'll just need to adopt tonight, and I put a bunch of them in the back for the audience as well. Uh, I didn't get a chance to review it last week. I reviewed it today, and I noticed that the Resolution fourteen dash twenty twenty-five contains the language from our last meeting. We already updated our public records policy. So the one I passed out simply contains the correct language. The resolution itself is correct. That was passed out seventy-two hours in advance. Uh, so there's nothing that need to be changed there. We don't need to waive the seventy-two hour rule. We simply just have to adopt the amended agenda, which now corrects the correct language. It has the correct language that Lottie is going to read to council. That's, it's that, just wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, and that's all. I don't have anything else. Thank you.
All right. Chair recognizes Mr. Jeff Rome. If there's anything that you'd like to add to the, for the agenda tonight?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have nothing specific. If there's any council, or when we go through legislation, if there's any questions, I think either myself or the Law Director could answer any questions the council may have, but other than that, uh, Mr. President, nothing from me.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Mayor Burke, is there anything that you would like to add to caucus tonight?
Not at this time.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate that very kindly. Um, is there anything else at council?
Can I just make mention very quickly?
Chair recognizes, uh, Councilwoman Collier.
We did put a moratorium on, um, vape shops within the city of Garfield Heights. So just to semi-address what is not, we, we have a moratorium on vape shop. So there are no more, there should not be any more vape shops coming into the city of Garfield Heights.
That's correct.
I just wanted, I just wanted that on the record.
I had, uh, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Collier. Chair recognizes, uh, Councilman Kelly.
Sorry for the delay. When was the last time we addressed the moratorium on vape shops?
I'm, I was just asking Jeff. I'm trying to remember without pulling up the ordinances front of me. I know we have the marijuana moratorium that we recently extended. Think, without looking up and having a list of ordinances, resolutions.
And, and the only reason why I'm asking is because, um, I'm trying to remember when this issue with this problem shop just now, when did it pop up in concert when we actually addressed the moratorium?
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just trying to put together that anything slipped by us, in other words, just, you know, that's.
If I'm not mistaken, Councilwoman Collier was one of the first persons that brought to council the issue that she was having in Ward One.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this particular shop that we were talking about again, um, has, has also came in prior, cause I brought it up, uh, to council. And then I think we did place, uh, a moratorium on it because of this particular same, uh, uh, shop that opened up. So we just need to get the, we, we'll, we'll review over, get the exact date, time that that was done. If we have overlooked it, then that would go to the, uh, probably to a safety committee, uh, to look at that, or.
Reintroduce it.
Well, reintroduce it, yes.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
So we, we can do that.
We can get dates for councils.
All right, one of the things that I wanted to, uh, ask the council, is there any other discussions that we needed to take care of tonight? That, uh, there was an issue that came up again about, um, recognizing, uh, during council meetings, official business and individuals that would like to come and speak on a personal issue. Personal business is not discussed at council. It's the city's business that we will discuss at council. And there's a place and time. If a person has a complaint, they need to go through the rules that is set forth by council for that complaint. And then, once they have addressed it with their council member, and they have called the city, and it was not resolved by the city, that department, or they never called our way to, uh, even the mayor's office, they can at that time ask to address the problem to have us look at it and resolve it again. But it must be, I'm sorry. It has to be done by comments by citizens. They can't say, hey, just, just read this one. They can sign the, the sheet in the back saying, I wanna make this known and address that issue to council.
Mr. President, can you clarify what hasn't been resolved by the department really means? Does that mean if, if the department resolves it and the resident doesn't agree with the resolution, is that still something that they can come up and talk about?
No. It does not mean that, uh, the city on this part has not tried to resolve that issue with that individual. It just means that they disagree with the city's decision. So I think that needs to be clear.
Cause sometimes legally, there's things that we can't do.
Yes.
And it doesn't please, and I'll give you a perfect example. I have people that ask me, why can't we limit the amount of rental properties we have in the city of Garfield Heights? And it's because there's a, a state, uh, code out there that prohibits us from being able to do that very thing. And sometimes you tell people that, they're not happy with you.
Sure.
So I just wanna clarify that.
So. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Collier.
Um, on that note, I did have a, a resident call me, um, who had went to a program within the city. And she wanted to know would it be okay if she came during comments, um, open citizens, would it be okay for her to come and speak on the program and how it impacted her? Um, so I just wanna make sure that, that it's okay, cause she did come to me. She asked for, so I am aware.
Okay, that's fine.
And even if it was something she wanted to say negative, I'd just, I'll just give you the heads up that she is, there is a comment coming.
During the miscellaneous comments?
Miscellaneous comments, yes.
Understood, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President. Councilman Kelly.
Um, last issue, if you, if it, could you, uh, kindly address the conversation you and I had? I, I, I presented to you, um, the, uh, um, conversation about, um, requesting that, uh, our directors be present for our meetings. And, uh, if you can address, you know.
Sure. As the, as, as you guys and ladies, as all my colleagues know, um, there, there is not a, a mandatory requirement at this time for, uh, our department heads to be present during the city council meetings. There's nothing in our charter that says they have to be present. They are guests of the council. Uh, that says that we can invite them, and should there be a problem with a department, then we can send them notification that, hey, we would like for them to be here at the council meeting so that they can further address whatever that issue is that we find. That is, that is, that is what has been said, and I think, uh, like the mayor, he is our guest. Not mandatory that the mayor be here. He is a guest of council. And that is, that is standard. I don't see anything that, I haven't seen anything that's written so far that says they are required to be here.
And I just wanted to make sure you addressed it because it was a con, I was, I was directing comments from residents to you, and after the conversation, you investigated, so I wanted to make sure that you addressed that. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Chair recognizes our Chief of Staff, Mr. Rome.
Uh, just, uh, for council's internal knowledge, if they're not aware, the way we've traditionally handled things, and certainly have been handling since my return, is that each director is obligated to supply the mayor with an update with respect to their department, uh, prior to a council meeting. So the idea being that when the mayor gives his report, whether it comes from the mayor, or if it's me reporting on behalf of the staff, the idea that would be that we would get an update, uh, from the departments with anything that's going on. Uh, also internally, our, our request of our directors is to make themselves present, certainly for caucus and potentially council as well, if they have a piece on the agenda for that evening. Um, that way, if there's questions that are gonna come from council, we have someone available to them. Um, that's kinda the way we've handled things and certainly how we're doing it right now. If council sees it fit to ask us to do something, otherwise, we're more than happy to consider it. But one of the things we try to do is be cognizant of the fact that any of our directors are traditionally salaried employees. They're trying to balance their forty hours. I don't know that having, you know, the police chief or the fire chief here, which would ultimately take them away from their department for several hours at a different time during the week, is a great utilization of their time. So we're trying to be cognizant of making sure we're available to the public, but also not kinda pulling our directors in unnecessary directions. But I do believe tonight we'll have an update with respect to a couple of the different departments as to things you've seen or that people may not see that are going on in the departments. So hopefully that helps give a little bit of clarification, Mr. President, but just the position the mayor is taking that we're trying to make sure we are, are in compliance with council's wishes.
I understand. Thank you, um, Chair thanks, um, Mr. Jeff Rome for those comments. Anybody else? Let's move on to our ordinances and, uh, resolution at this time. All right. Let's start with ordinance is eighteen. All right. Let's start with ordinance is eighteen twenty twenty-five. All right, don't let everybody jump in one time.
Uh, I, I, oh, I, I got it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Collier.
You're welcome.
Take eighteen twenty twenty-five, ordinance number nineteen twenty twenty-five. Councilwoman Rome. Uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five.
I'll take it.
Councilwoman Mack. Ordinance on the resolution number twelve twenty twenty-five.
Partnering with Marymount and we don't have the dates yet, but we will start the first War Two cleanup. It'd be in April, but the next meeting I had the dates for it. And then congratulations to Mr. Settles for being on the recreational board for the city of Garfield Heights. And I have received a lot of complaints about trash again. And I mean, I really don't know what's it. I'm having the re- I'm having a repeat situation to where the same people are calling. Even if I stop by, it's still the same people. So again, please just try to make sure you bring your trash bins back. And I don't know if they're gonna ever start finding some of the people that keep doing it every week. Cause I mean, my residents are very upset. They continue to call every week and it's normally the same people that we having issues with. So please bring the trash bins back. And I would like to take a moment and speak about Women's History Month because this is Women's History Month. So we, as we celebrate Women's History Month, we want to recognize the strength, resilience, and achievement of women everywhere. From pioneers who broke barriers to the women who uplift their families and communities every day. Their contributions make a big difference in our lives. And yet despite progress, challenges remain in equality in wages, leaderships, opportunities, and representation. That's why we must continue to support, uplift, empower women in all spaces. Their voices matter, their contributions are vital, and their futures must be filled with opportunities with no obstacles. I often remind myself that I had to be strong, had to learn to be stronger than my own battles. And this is the story of many other women. So facing hardships, yet standing firm, refusing to be defined by struggles and pushing forward towards courage. So let us commit to advocating for policies that uplift women, ensuring they have the resources, the opportunities they deserve. When women rise, communities thrive. Together, let's continue making history. And that is all I have today.
Chair recognizes, first of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Mack for her kind words. Women are very important and I'll make other comments about that as to recognizing them as well. I want to thank you again for your comments. Chair recognizes Councilman Smith.
Mr. President?
Sir.
Let's not be guilty of deflating and detouring the women. I yield my time over to my colleagues to the left.
We will move right along with, at this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Kelly.
Good evening. I want to first congratulate our Garfield Heights basketball team, the middle school and also the high school. This is March Madness. And so I'm praying that no one has any emergencies in the month of March because I will have my remote on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So please just hold all our emergencies for just Monday and Tuesday. But seriously, last, last meeting, there was a group that met in Garfield. And I actually had an opportunity to speak with this gentleman by the name of Bill Holman. He is one of the stirring committee members of the Citizens for Tax Reform Ohio. And so they had a meeting over at St. Mon- Monica's. And, and, and it was an accident. They didn't really know that it was, that it was a meeting night. And so they're all, they're all over the, all over the state right now trying to talk to, they're scheduling dates, trying to talk to everybody about what's happening with our property taxes. The, 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 the one thing that I would ask you to do is keep your ears peer up, ears open and ready to hear of the next date that this group will schedule to try and have this conversation. I think I didn't have an opportunity to talk to you, Mr. Mayor, but they, he, they did mention you. And we wanted to see, maybe see if we can schedule this meeting here at the Civic Center at this time so then we could talk about these property taxes. One of the things that I will openly admit that we, we know that the, 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 our, that our mortgage prices are going up and it's because of the taxes. In, in my example and I, for many others that I'm find, I'm finding out, you know, we pay our taxes, you know, we, our taxes paid through a mortgage. So when we pay it, taxes already paid. However, what I'm finding out is that a lot of people will probably get a, a huge surprise when the next, the next quarter comes out with the escrow adjustments. So the, the, the one thing that I was told and reminded is that make sure you get in touch with the county because you have until March 31st, March 31st to challenge, to challenge the, uh, the, these appraisal of the house, of our homes. So please, please, please make sure, you know, you don't drop the ball on that. This is March and you have until March 31st to try and challenge those prices. You don't want to look up and then next quarter find out that you is, you know, my, personally, my price, I think it went up like eighty, eighty dollars. I'm hearing that's a nice ball figure. There are people who's price, whose mortgage went up a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. It could very well be that it will go up a thousand dollars because of this adjustment. So don't drop the ball on trying to get in touch with the county and challenging this appraisal. Again, keep your eyes and your ears peeled and open to a date when we will address this again. What you can do is I was told that they have a Facebook page. So if you go to Facebook and look up Citizens for Tax Reform Ohio, they actually have their own page. So they're trying to get their website up and going and there's a lot of things that they're doing because they work just like you and I, you know, on a regular basis. They have day jobs. So with that, that's really all I have. And again, as soon as we can get more information on this, we will pass it on.
I want to thank Councilman Kelly for his kind remarks. At this time, Council recognizes Councilwoman Noron.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to let everyone know that my block watch meeting will be on March 27th. We have a parade meeting this Wednesday, the 12th. We'll be stuffing envelopes to get out to businesses so we could use any help. If you want to join us, it'll be at 5:30 at the Civic Center. Also, I wanted to announce that at the Easter celebration on April 5th, the senior center will be doing a fundraiser and they will be selling bakery. So please come out and support our senior center with their bake sale. My last announcement is, I know we've been celebrating basketball. I did want to announce that the Trinity Rustlers went to States this past weekend. I had the pleasure of driving them down. We had four boys go down to States and we had one girl, which was the first in the history of Trinity. So our boys, two of them ended up taking third place. So congratulations to those two that placed in States. So congratulations to those two that placed in States. And that's all I have for today.
I want to thank Councilwoman Nerone for her remarks as well. And last but not least, I want to try to get you out of here in a timely fashion. Did I miss anybody tonight? That's the first thing, did I miss anybody? Everybody got a chance? All right, good. As a councilman over in Ward Four, I want to thank the many people that have seen me out and about. I've been getting stopped quite a bit lately. But I first want to recognize our high school Barcy Boys Basketball Team. They have been doing a great job and they're playing in the final four and they'll be in Canton this weekend, if I'm not mistaken. And so we need to support them, we need to show up and show out for Garfield. Garfield's been doing a marvelous job, y'all. If you haven't been to any of the games, I've been to two of them so far and we're packing the house. So we're asking all the residents, this is Garfield Heights High School. They carry the city's name. And I'm asking the city to get behind Sonny Johnson and his boys down there at the high school and support them in the final four as they go out and try to get to the state championship in Division Three. Secondly, I want to talk about some things that I'm going to join my colleagues that have having cleanups because it's needed after the winter. So in April, I will give you a further date about a cleanup for Ward Four, but I'm going to join them in making sure that takes place. Also, on April the 30th, Ward Four will have their Block Watch Club meeting. And it'll be here at the Civic Center at 6:30 on April the 30th. So please come join us here for the Ward Four. They've got a lot of stuff to give away and some things that'll surprise you. So come show up for that as well. Now, on the other side, I wanted to talk about what I sit through today for an hour and a half on East 88th Street and read. I watched six cars just blow past the stop sign. While there, you know, this is an ongoing problem for them. Also on East 88th in South Highland, someone just drove through and smashed the, the, uh, the postal box, knocked the clear off and they finally just picked it up and moved it out of the area. Also on East 88th, someone decided to take and pull the speed sign up, take it out of the ground and then stick it back so low that you almost couldn't see it. Today, someone also ran over a stop sign on Park Heights, at 104th Street in Park Heights, just knocked the stop sign down. We need to be reporting these incidents to our police department. We need to be vigilant as residents and, and monitor these things. That is one of the reasons why Neighbors on Duty is an important group in the city because they voluntarily give their cameras over to the police department. They help monitor individuals that may be committing a crime. So I want to thank everybody for that alone. And I want to thank everybody for your participation tonight. I want to thank you for being patient with me, the residents. Again, we're here to serve you. We're very proud of our service to this city. And last, I would be remiss if I didn't make this one, one observation. I want to thank the city and the mayor for the proclamation that he gave to my colleague Stacy Collier. Her church, I think it was last Sunday.
Yes, sir.
That she was recognized as the first African-American woman that just happened to serve as the pro tem of city council. And I think that she is well deserving of that proclamation. And the mayor and the cities, we, we are very grateful and appreciative to that. Lastly, I don't know how the mayor and his staff also recognized me as the first African-American to serve in this city as the president of city council. This has not taken place, folks, in this city since the city was founded. And I think in, is, is history says it was founded in 1916, if I'm not mistaken. Somewhere in there, was it 1916? 1919, okay. But we didn't become a official city until what, 1930? Where we, what became charter. So that's a long time in our city's history to see a diversified council with women. Leading the way on council for one of the first times in many years in its history. And I did say women because they outnumber us on council. So I'm very proud of that. There is a lot of tradition that comes from the women on council. And I'm very proud of the women that we have here on council with us. With that note in mind, I want to say, can I get in the motion to adjourn, please?
President?
Councilman Kelly.
Make a motion that we adjourn tonight's regular council meeting?
It's been so moved by Councilman Kelly to adjourn the council meeting, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been so moved in second by Councilwoman Mack. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. The yes chair.